This meeting of the Patent Township Board of Supervisors, April fourteenth, two thousand and twenty one, to order. A couple of announcements. The board met an executive session on April twelfth to receive advice from the solicitor on potential litigation. Also, Doug put down the deadline for filing earnings income tax returns with Center Tax Agency has been extended to May seventeenth. But Doug, according to the CDT article today, the deadline is still April fifteenth, but what they've done is waived any any late fee or interest for people who file between April fifteenth and May seventeenth. That's correct? Okay. A third announcement, we item six G, six G rezoning request for four seventy-four and four eighty Douglas Drive. That item has been postponed. It will be up here in the April twenty eighth Board of Supervisors meeting. So if you're here to speak to that particular issue, you'll have to return on April twenty eighth to make your views known. Next item on the agenda is public comments. I hold on, Mr. Mullen. Let me just see if there are any other public comments, and then I'll get back to you, Mr. Mullen. Any other people here who wish to speak on an agenda item, on an item that's not on the current agenda? Anybody? If so, unmute yourself and you can have the floor. Seeing none? Okay, Mr. Mullen.
Thank you. My name is Kevin Mullen. I've owned a house in Patent Township for twenty-two years. The problem is the wastewater utility UAJA. They overbilled me by two thousand dollars in five of the last six years. And I've set up a website to describe everything they did to me in the last six years, statecollegereport.com. Anyone can contact me through that site. And I have a question for your manager because two meetings ago, a month ago, your board member, Mr. Abrams, told the manager to check in with your UAJA representatives. I'd like a status update about that. Did he talk to them or can I talk to them? Because they, the UAJA board members have refused to talk to me for six years, all ten of them, including the ones from Patent Township. Do you have an update on that, please, Mr. Manager?
I didn't talk to them.
Can you tell me what they said or what they're, what they said to you? Or can I meet you in your office another time?
They confirmed what we thought, that they had their, they had their own reasonings for billing you as they did.
Okay, I just want you to know that your UAJA representative said I had an apartment in my house for five years, but they never inspected my house. They were never in my house for the last twenty-two years. So how can you UAJA board members from Patent Township say I have an apartment in my house when they never even inspected it? That's not logical. Plus, your rental inspectors at cr cog.net, they said I had a single-family house for twenty-two years. I have rental permits for the last twenty-two years saying I had a single-family house, never an apartment. So Patent Township has a conflict or conflict of interest with me. I posted that conflict on my website, statecollegereport.com. I see you had a secret meeting with your solicitor. I should have been at that meeting because I'm trying to work in good faith. I'm trying to resolve the situation. And if you have this attitude that you're trying to fight me or ready to go to court at any moment, that's not my attitude. It might be yours, not mine. I'm trying to work with you. I before met you at your office at least once or twice and met with your zoning guy. I'm trying to work with this out, but you're, you're not just UAJA, but Patent Township and then the other townships. It's frustrating what they're, it seems like a conflict of interest for me that they're telling me I have an apartment and I don't have an apartment for the last, for five of the last six years. And I'm just frustrated. I'm going to sue the UAJA in around September. If this doesn't get resolved before then, I'm trying to reach out to anyone who will discuss this with me, especially your solicitor, your lawyer, for the township, but I want to work this out. And your zoning officer won't talk to me. He got mad when, when I thought I told the truth. And I'm frustrated with a lot of people, a lot of organizations, including UAJA. If your zoning officer, Doug Ken Soder, has a problem, it's not with me, it's with the rental inspectors at cr cog.net. They said I had a single-family home for, for twenty-two years. And I'm just frustrated. And so your UAJA representatives won't, won't meet me or talk to me. That's frustrating that they, they won't tell me what, why they did, why they billed me twice as much as everyone else in Patent Township. I'm just so frustrated. Statecollegereport.com. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mullen. Any other public comments on items not on the agenda? Seeing none, I'm closing the public comment section of this agenda. Before I proceed to the next agenda item, I have a statement to read from, from, from us, from Patent Township. And the statement is, "The Patent Township Board of Supervisors has reviewed the matter involving Mr. Kevin Mullen and the University Area Joint Authority, UAJA, regarding his charges for surrogacy service from approximately two thousand and fifteen through February two thousand and twenty. The billing decision in question was made solely by UAJA and under its jurisdiction as a municipal authority. All amounts paid by Mr. Mullen went solely to UAJA. It is the township's understanding that a legal suit was filed by Mr. Mullen against UAJA in two thousand and eighteen, and the court entered a judgment in favor of UAJA. As part of the UAJA governing documents, the Patent Township Board of Supervisors does appoint two township residents to serve on the UAJA Board of Directors. The UAJA is organized under the Pennsylvania Municipal Authorities Act, and the township has no control over decisions of the UAJA staff or Board of Directors." End of statement. We will now go to the next agenda item, which is number three, presentations and public hearings. We will receive an update from Judge Han and Dr. Krishnamukti, who are members of the Governor's Advisory Commission on Asian Pacific American Affairs. Who wishes to go first?
Sure, I'll sign first on the agenda. Yeah, my name is Donald Han. I'm a member of the Governor's Advisory Commission on Asian Pacific American Affairs, and I'm chair of the Government That Works Committee. I thank you for allowing us to speak, to update you as to where our goings on. Our major focus in the Government That Works Committee is language access. Over the past year, we've been working with Center County Bar Association and Midstate Literacy Council regarding the holding various legal literacy clinics, essentially geared towards educating, I think, the large number of people who, for whom, in this area, for whom English is a second language. Essentially, I think I have said in the past that essentially the worst thing when I'm traveling abroad is to think of is having, number one, a medical problem or a legal problem. And I'm sort of like thinking that I certainly am not in a position to address the former, but certainly I'm thinking that these sessions are intended to address the latter. Essentially, the, over the last year, it's been, there were sessions held thanks to the Center County Bar Association regarding renters' rights, immigration, debt collection, traffic stops, divorce and custody, and expungement. And I think it's, I think it's a great program. I think it's well received. Probably one of my asks today is to, if Patent Township would join in endorsing, you know, a continuation of those sessions for next year. The second thrust that is translation services, I've been working once again with Midstate Literacy Council, and also this time with Penn State, the Administrative Office of Pennsylvania Courts regarding recruiting of translators here at, here in State College and in Penn State. I think that there is a wealth of talent regarding language, knowledge, translation, knowledge up here. I think that the general goal is that if we recruit more people, the greater number of choice will lead to a greater quality in the translation services offered. One of the things that Dr. Krishnamukti basically had spearheaded is an analysis of three-one-one. Three-one-one is like nine-one-one, but for non-emergency services. Essentially, it's in Philadelphia, the three-one-one dealt with service requests, code issues and violations. I mean, essentially, if someone had, if a citizen had an issue regarding codes and code violations, rubbish in recycling regulations and street repairs, or if they have information requests like the hours of parks and libraries, trash recycling schedules, how to contact supervisors and council members, how to contact managers. Essentially, the three-one-one would be a way, an avenue for which they could contact them. And I think that, I'm thinking that this is a really great potential service for the area inasmuch as having regional translation services may benefit from an economy of scale. You know, that more and better quality if it's done regionally than if, for example, Patent Township had its own translation plan or Ferguson Township has its own plan, or State College Borough has its own plan, or Center County has its own plan. That having been said, I yield to Dr. Krishnamukti.
Thank you. Thank you, Judge Han. It's my pleasure to be back here with the Patent Township Board of Supervisors at your meeting. Today, I, like Judge Han, I was also appointed to the commission in December of two thousand and nineteen. And I started off on the Schools That Teach Committee. So among the thirty commissioners that are on the commission, we all do different things. From civil rights to trying to make sure that jobs are, you know, pay a living wage to making sure government works for people, there's health equity and more. Since December of two thousand and nineteen, I have been working in communication and engagement and outreach with both the APA communities and the larger community. And as part of that, I am spearheading the effort to have Asian Pacific American Heritage Month celebrated and marked in May of two thousand and twenty-one. Oh, I got my years wrong. So I started doing this in, in December of two thousand and twenty. It feels like we lost two thousand and twenty, right? But anyway, so I've been doing this work, the communication and outreach for about a few months now. And when I began this task of trying to get May celebrated and acknowledged around the state, I did not know how important that was going to be. But with the uptick in the anti-Asian hate, it feels like this is a really, really important moment in time, an opportunity to both elevate Asian Pacific Islander voices and to, you know, celebrate our ways of living and joy, not just stop anti-Asian hate, but just kind of embrace the whole experience. So with that, I want to let all of you know some ways different people around the state are taking this opportunity. The very first one is there are governments across the state, both county governments and local governments that are joining our Pennsylvania state government in issuing a proclamations. And that's very simple. They are first of all just declaring that May is Asian Pacific American Heritage Month. Locally, we do have our Center County Board of Commissioners as well as State College Borough who are on board, and Ferguson is also considering this. So that is a request I would make of all of you, just a proclamation declaring that May is Asian Pacific American Heritage Month. And after Patent Township does this, I would also encourage, you know, whatever places of influence that you have, it might be organizations that you're part of. It might be your workplaces. It might be units. Maybe each of these places could do something just to acknowledge that this is Asian Pacific American Heritage Month. And just that acknowledgement goes a long way. The second thing I would appreciate your help with is we have opportunities for Patent Township members to participate in. We have a call for participation for K to twelve students of APA origin. We are requesting them to submit their art or their written word entry for an online exhibit that we are calling APA Quilt of Hope. I do have, I think I've shared these guidelines with some of the township supervisors, but I'm happy to share that, you know, with the manager or any other way you would like me to share this. We also have a call for artists of Asian Pacific Islander origin to submit a short video of their traditional APA art form. And I should say over here, actually, the artists can be of any origin. We're trying to actually give, elevate or any kind of art. So the performer can be of any origin, but we're trying to get submissions of traditional APA art. And this will then be profiled in a celebration on May twenty-second, a one-hour program that we're calling celebrating tradition in a year of resilience. So again, I'm happy to share that entry form. We also have a series of events that we are either doing ourselves or doing it in partnership with others. Some of them are really innovative. We have some of our commissioners joining to do Zoom events, which they are calling Make Yummies Not Hate. And what, for example, two of our commissioners are friends from kindergarten, and they're going to come together on May second, which is also Hawaiian Day. And they both have connections to Hawaii. They are actually going to make a Hawaiian dish while having a conversation about anti-Asian hate. And considering the fact that these two commissioners go way back to kindergarten, I think it's going to be a really revealing conversation about, you know, their journey. We have two other Zoom sessions planned where it's going to be, and one is going to be multi-generational family of Indian origin. Another one is one of our commissioners who is married to a non-Asian, and they're going to do some Indonesian food. So we have things like that. We have also this artist thing planned. We have some panel discussions. And let me see what else. We have an author event on May twenty-sixth where there's going to be a conversation with Pulitzer winner Viet Thanh Nguyen, who, when he came to the United States, was a refugee in Hattiesburg in his first several years. So he is going to come to an author event to a Hattiesburg bookstore, which is Midtown Scholar Bookstore, and we're going to have that conversation. So we have a series of events, and here our request is that if any of you are interested in this calendar of events, we'd be happy to share it with you, and if Patent Township can publicize this in some way on your website or something, that would be great. The last ask I have is if you are interested in organizing any virtual events, I would be happy, you know, to add your event to this statewide list of events. And I do want to say, you know, State College Borough, State College School District, Palmer Museum of Art, Center for Performing Arts, PA Center for the Book. All of these organizations locally, Community Diversity Group, are either having events or they are engaged in some kind of effort to mark this month. So if Patent Township, you know, either you yourself or any other entities in Patent Township want to do something, if we can help in some way, we're happy to help. As well as if you would like your event to be put on our calendar of events, you know, please feel free to reach out to me or Judge Han. So that's all I had to say. I want to thank you for welcoming us here and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from members of the board? Bessie, yes? Oh, you're just clapping your hands.
No, I'm actually raising it. I can't find the raised hand. So first of all, I would like to actually take this moment to celebrate my motherhood of two children, two daughters from China. So I take personal satisfaction or excitement in thanking both Judge Han and Dr. Krishnakuti for their efforts and for their suggestions that Patent Township be involved in this. I'd like to, in the month, I would like to move that Patent Township declare the month of May as Asian Pacific American Heritage Month, and that we make every effort to include activities that both Dr. Krishnakuti has explained and the the language and, I'm sorry, the endorsement of the continuation of work on language access, legal literacy, translation, translator services, and three-one-one that Judge Han discussed, have those featured prominently on our website. Apologies for the length of the motion.
I second it.
Okay, I think Elliot had his hand raised a second before you did, and you know, so.
Okay, I'm having trouble finding my hand.
It's moved and seconded. Now, discussion, Pam, Rob, go ahead.
All I have to say is thanking both of our guests for their information. But can we also get that information to our township managers so that can, that all of the Board of Supervisors can have that information and digest what else we can do and be a part of this wonderful event that are coming up? So if you could just forward all your information so we can, you know, have a moment to, to, you know, talk to each other and discuss this and be a part of this great event.
I would be happy to share it, yeah.
Any other comments or questions from the board? How about the general public who are attending now? Anybody else wish to comment? Seeing none, let's have a vote on the motion. All in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
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 Opposed? None opposed? So motion carries. Thank you very much, Judge Han and Dr. Krishnakuti. Okay, next item is Public Safety, March two thousand and twenty-one Police Report. Chief Jolly, you're on board here.
All right, thank you. So our agency had a very busy month in the March of twenty, March of two thousand and twenty-one. You'll see, we had one hundred and fifty-eight traffic stops. We wrote twenty-nine traffic citations, issued seven parking tickets, and we're really busy with criminal arrests. We had twenty-five criminal arrests. Luckily, we had some, some very nice weather in the month of March, so our bike patrol officers were able to get out there. They pedaled sixty-five miles, did a hundred and five business checks, handled four incidents, and issued two traffic warnings from traffic stops that they were able to do on their bicycles. Some of the department notes, we had a twenty-six-year-old male who was arrested and charged with simple assault and harassment. The arrests stemmed from a domestic dispute where the male struck a female. We had a thirty-three-year-old male charged with indecent assault. The male had inappropriately touched a female that he had befriended. Um, we had an incident where we cited ten individuals for underage drinking. Um, our officers were called to a residence uh, for a noise complaint and the officers found minors uh, at the residence in possession of and consuming alcohol. Uh, we had a thirty nine year old male who was arrested and charged with escape and public drunkenness. Our officers were dispatched to a call about a male standing in traffic and yelling at passing vehicles. Upon arrival, our officers uh, spoke with the male for quite some time uh, to try to keep him safe and out of traffic. Eventually, the male ran from the officers uh, as they were investigating the incident. Uh, two individuals were arrested for DUI. Our officers successfully served thirteen of the eighteen warrants that they attempted. And lastly, our officers conducted six vacation home checks. Uh, our officers did use force uh, from the incident that I just mentioned with the male in traffic uh, that we did have to use force during that incident. Uh, again, we were dealing with an intoxicated individual who's yelling that and stepping into traffic. Our officers uh, verbally deescalated uh, the individual convincing them to remain on the sidewalk. Uh, the eventual, the individual eventually ran from the officers as they were conducting their investigation. After a short foot pursuit, uh, the individual laid down on the ground voluntarily. Uh, they did start to resist slightly as the officers handcuffed the individual. Uh, and the officers had to use their hands to overcome their resistance uh, and successfully handcuffed the individual. Uh, there were no injuries reported though by the individual or by the officers who were involved. Um, some of the community relations, Officer Tuskovich had a very busy month. Uh, he spoke with Mr. Schmitz, sixth grade Park Forest Middle School class about law enforcement and answered questions uh, from, in general, from the class. He spoke with a Girl Scout troop via Zoom about police investigations and again, generally about law enforcement. Uh, he spoke with two of Mr. Cunningham's eighth grade Park Forest Middle School academic literacy classes about some of the unsolved cases here in Center County. And then he also spoke with uh, Ms. Brennan's eighth grade Park Forest Middle School Social Studies classes about the Bill of Rights and how it relates to law enforcement. Officer Schaefer did attend an organizational meeting for Camp Cadet. Uh, unfortunately, we did find out that uh, still due to COVID uh, issues and concerns, um, they are not going to hold Camp Cadet uh, for uh, twenty twenty one. So uh, we will be looking forward to uh, resuming uh, Camp Cadet in twenty twenty two. Uh, and as always, our officers were very busy with the school zones for student pickup and drop off. Uh, some of the department training and activities for the month of March. Uh, Detective Snyder, Officer Schaefer, Officer Tuskovich, all attended tactical response team training. Uh, Officer Finocchio attended a internet intelligence uh, for tactical investigations training. Officer Schaefer and Officer Basala attended a wellness officer safety uh, symposium. And I attended Task Force on Policing in Communities of Color meetings uh, on five separate occasions. A webinar on PTSD and law enforcement. Uh, the Patent Township Business Association meeting, the Center County Chiefs of Police meeting and the Campus Community Union. Um, I also did sit on the uh, selection board for the vacant uh, chief of police position at Spring Township. I think they are getting close to uh, to getting a chief hired up there. Um, as I alluded to, uh, the last meeting, we were on the verge of finding out uh, about our reaccreditation status. But I'm very pleased and happy to report uh, that we did achieve uh, reaccreditation again. Uh, the commission voted unanimously to re-accredit Patent Township Police Department for another three years. Uh, they had mentioned that uh, in their letter to us that, you know, this work uh, and this program demonstrates the type of leadership uh, that they strive for in law enforcement in Pennsylvania. Um, so we're very proud to be uh, part of that. Very proud of the police officers here in Patton Township. It just shows their dedication, their hard work. Um, and a special thanks has to go out to Sergeant Sean Albright, who is our accreditation manager uh, and does all the paperwork and keeps all the files straight. Uh, make sure that we uh, have the proofs and that we are continuing to uh, abide by all the standards set forth by the state. Uh, so again, very proud of the agency uh, that, that letter there represents a lot of hard work by our police officers. Uh, did include also a letter from a, a resident that we received. Um, just thanking our officers. Uh, it's in reference to the uh, the incident where we cited ten uh, individuals for uh, underage. Uh, so she was just uh, expressing her thanks for uh, for our uh, work on that incident. Um, our call list, we had a total of three hundred and eighty nine calls uh, in March. That's uh, up slightly from February when we had three hundred and seventy seven calls for service. Um, the most frequent call for service in March was traffic where we had seventy eight traffic incidents uh, followed by health and safety EMS assist where we had forty five of those. Uh, and that completes my report. I'd be happy to, to answer any questions. There are.
Thank you, Chief. Any comments or questions? Uh, Anita, yes, go ahead.
Sorry, my button on indicating the hand, I must have an old Zoom thing. I can't hit the handle. Uh, congratulations to the chief and the department for the reac- reaccreditation. I think that speaks volumes about the professionalism and the excellence of the management of our police. Um, I wonder if the police chief might take just a moment, given all the national publicity about how people do traffic stops um, in this country, to maybe reassure the public on some of the policies that we have when a police officer would make a traffic stop, given the concern, I think, of many in our community who are very much in touch with what has happened in Virginia and Minnesota. I realize this is a long meeting and um, we've got a lot on our agenda, but I think this is something that many in our community would feel reassured by to know some of the training policies that our department has that might reassure when a traffic stop is happening, that they wouldn't be seeing the kind of things that we're seeing on the news media now uh, from Virginia and Minnesota.
Yeah, and uh, oh boy, we could talk about this for, for hours. You're right. Uh, we have a full plate tonight, so I'll, I'll try to keep this brief, but um, yeah, so our, our police officers again are, are very highly trained, very highly educated. Um, we have very level headed police officers. Um, and you know, you typically will not see a, a police officer uh, pull their weapon on, on a normal day to day traffic stop. Uh, generally, you know, there are officers are trained and, and the one situation where you would see uh, potentially an officer having a, a weapon removed from their holster during a traffic stop would be for a felony stop or very serious traffic stop. Um, you know, and ninety nine point nine 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 percent of our uh, traffic stops, our officers uh, introduce themselves. They tell the individual what they're being stopped for. Um, so they have the conversation, they ask for their information. Uh, and then, you know, again, they can have a dialogue about uh, any, any questions the motorists may have about the violation that they're being stopped for. Um, but you know, again, you do not see officers with their, their firearms out on, on traffic stops on a normal day to day basis. Um, and you know, we do have a, a very strict TASER policy. Um, we have some precautions in place that our officers wear them uh, so that they're cross drawn, so they're not on the same side as their, their, their firearms. Um, our TASERS are yellow, bright yellow in color. Um, we, we are required uh, by our policy uh, and our training standards to, to train on them yearly. Um, so our officers actually deploy TASER cartridges uh, at, at least on one occasion per year, two cartridges. And we discuss these, these types of things in, in our use of force training. Um, and, and we are making our use of force training more robust. Um, and making sure that our, again, our officers are trained the best that we can train them so that we can try to avoid any of these types of incidents that we've seen here recently.
Thank you.
Pam, Rob, go ahead.
I just want to piggyback and thank you, my colleague, uh, Anita Thies for bringing that up. And Chief, we already talked. So again, let me say thank you for assuring our community across the board, um, especially people of color. Uh, that we do live in a safe, respectable uh, community and that they should be very proud of our police department and how they handle individuals regardless of who they are. So again, let me say thank you and to our board who continue to be on top of in, on incidents that continue to be a daily uh, incident on, on police officers and harassment and assaults and how we at Patton Township stand apart. So thank you again, and I know our agenda is long and I know we were talking about doing a, a session for the public. So again, thank you for taking that time to do that.
Any other comments or questions with the chief? No? Uh, okay, thank you. We'll move on to item four B under Public Safety, Local Use of Radar Legislative Update. You want to start on this, Doug?
Yeah, thank you. Um, every year we, we get excited, even though we are a government, we do get excited every once in a while. Uh, that as the last state in the union that does not permit local police to have radar, that the Pennsylvania Legislature will, will uh, this year pass and pass a, enact legislation that permits that. Uh, so we're asking folks to reach out to their representatives in the House, which are uh, Rich Irvin and Scott Conklin for us. Uh, depends which side of Atherton Street you're on. And uh, Senator Corman to encourage them to pass uh, House Bill six oh six or Senate Bill four nineteen. Uh, I did take the, I did take the liberty of putting together a, a um, uh, a, a draft resolution for us, if you'd like to. It's based on the sample that was, uh, there was a reference to in the agenda. Uh, if the board is interested in passing that, we'll get that signed and then send that on to our, our legislative representatives also.
Any comments or questions from the board? Yeah, Anita, Alex, would you uh, drop that uh, share screen so I can see everybody? Thank you. All right, Anita, go ahead.
Yes, I think that's an excellent idea. I would move the resolution, but I would also suggest that perhaps we do a very short letter to the editor of the Center Daily Times. Um, not that everyone in the county watches uh, gets their news from watching CNET for our township. Um, but to reach a larger public and maybe piggyback, and I see later in the agenda that there's also an encouragement to um, pass House Bill two fifty five uh, regarding uh, transfer of funds. And if we did a letter to the editor, perhaps as we reach the end of the agenda on House Bill two fifty five later, if that is also approved, that uh, the two could be combined in a very short letter to the editor, a timely letter to the editor. Um, I know other townships might be doing the same, uh, but I think we could at least speak out in a broader way. But I would move that um, we adopt the uh, resolution that uh, Doug has presented as a draft resolution.
There are seconds to the motion.
I'd like to second that motion.
Let's see, seconded. Uh, any more comments or discussion? I guess we can vote. All in favor, say aye and raise your hand. So I can see.
Aye, aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, so uh, Anita, since you offered or suggested uh, a, a letter to the editor from the township, are, are you volunteering to draft such a letter?
Yes, I would be, and I would send it, I guess, individually to the supervisors for your review and to Doug. I can do that later tonight.
Thank you. All right, uh, the motion's passed, so without any further discussion on that item, we can move to the next one, which is uh, Policy Discussion Standards on Daily Use of Force. I understand that Dr. Jones cannot join us this meeting till a little later, so I will be postponing that item uh, until Dr. Jones can join us. So after that item is Public Works, A, Resolution to Accept Easements on Portions of Belfont Central Rail Trail from Toftrees Apartments. Doug, you want to start this one?
Yeah, our zoning officer's been working on this issue probably for at least a year and a half and uh, discussions with their local management. Uh, they have agreed to provide those easements to the township as very central parts of the Belfon Central Rail Trail. Uh, these include uh, part of the trail that's been improved that's on uh, the parcel. That includes the Highwood Apartments at six fifty and six sixty Toftrees. And then there's another section uh, adjacent to some older apartments on Toftrees Avenue that does need some work. Uh, but we're glad to get it into our hands so we can start bringing that up, up to standards. Uh, we want to make sure that we thank the Burger Organization. They have provided these uh, easements at no cost to the township. And it's a good step forward and I've already started working on the next couple of sec- sections uh, and uh, made sure they knew that the burgers provided these, these easements at no cost, so. With that, I'd recommend that the board adopt Resolution twenty twenty one dash zero twelve, accepting these easements, and we'll get them recorded.
So zero twelve, I have zero ten, uh, um, twenty twenty one dash ten. So which one is it? Which is correct?
No, it's ten. You're correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, Elliot has his hand raised, so I assume Elliot, you're move, you just moved to adopt Resolution twenty twenty one dash ten. Is there a second?
Second, Pam, Rob.
Okay, moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Comments or questions? Seeing none, we'll move to, to vote. All those in favor, say aye. Raise your hand, please.
Aye.
Aye.
Um, everyone approved, so the motion carries. Okay. Moving on. Uh, Planning and Zoning, six, A, Planning Commission Report.
Okay.
Go ahead, Rich.
Welcome. Uh, so we met twice. We met, we had a uh, on a uh, normal meeting, uh, April fifth, and then we continued um, after two and a half, two forty five. Uh, then we had a follow up of work session on uh, April twelfth. Uh, Jim, please tell me if I miss anything as uh, highlights. Uh, so the first thing is uh, we took a look at uh, the retail market sketch plan. Um, and then we moved on to uh, taking a look at um, the uh, Rocky property, which is at six seventy uh, Grayswoods Boulevard. And uh, we, we didn't have any problems with that. Uh, we approved that. Um, then we went on to talking about the Penn Highlands um, um, micro hospital. Um, had some discussion in uh, at the beginning of um, just how traffic was going to flow, things with sidewalks, that kind of thing. Um, it came to our attention that uh, the one major thing that needs to get in place at this point um, is there is uh, a traffic study where um, and I could be wrong at this, I'm just uh, going through my notes uh, where there has to be uh, some type of uh, light synchronization uh, due to um, this project going in. So that's something that uh, needs to be addressed uh, going forward. Um, and um, then we moved on to um, then we moved on uh, to taking a look at um, uh, adding a uh, fitness center use to uh, the industrial district for zoning, and uh, we were fine with that. Um, then, and um, then, and, and then we also talked about, and this is sort of uh, probably the one thing that we came to a unanimous uh, consent on uh, to vote down is uh, we on the planning commission uh, for um, several different reasons uh, chose to vote uh, seven to zero against the rezoning of four seven four and four eighty Douglas Drive. Um, we, you know, we had some concerns over the eighteen percent grade. We had some concerns over displacing people from their homes. Uh, we had some discussion in terms of uh, there's other vacant commercial properties, you know, uh, to move in that direction to put another commercial property uh, on the market. Um, we had concerns over uh, um, traffic safety uh, at uh, that area with the slope. Um, so tho- those were uh, kind of our thoughts on why we decided to uh, vote seven zero against the rezoning of that. Um, then what, uh, then at our work session, um, this. Um, then what uh then at our work session um this past Monday, uh we we discussed um we discussed uh the subdivision um with requiring to put streetlights in. We all felt uh that that um we felt comfortable with putting streetlights in. We had some discussion on, you know, could you apply it to certain zoning areas and not? But um I believe at the end, we 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 thought that uh it made sense. Um, and then going down to uh the uh EV charging stations, um we came to uh a consensus agreement through some discussion that at this point, we feel that uh the general market uh should take care of how our township policies, et cetera, uh move forward uh in that vein. So that's just kind of a summary of things that we discussed, and uh I'm open for any questions that anyone has. Thank you.
Thank you, Rich. Uh, any comments or questions? Yes, Anita, go ahead.
Um, the planning commission has really been the energizing bunny here. I commend you for your multiple review of multiple proposals. I had a couple of questions about some of the specifics, but should I hold them as we go through each um
Yeah.
thing that's coming up?
Yes, I I would say hold them for till we discuss them individually.
The only other comment that I would make at this time, um since it's not on the agenda per se, but you did bring it up on the charging stations and letting the township kind of follow the market plan. Is there um, what was the concern about maybe allowing charging stations to go into garages of new homes that are being built as kind of a a proactive planning measure?
Yeah, so uh we did discuss that. Uh, however, we sort of felt that, you know, uh in terms of uh trying to retrofit existing structures and trying to predict what builders want to put in going forward and the popularity of electric vehicles, that we felt that uh the market should dictate that going forward. I, you know, maybe I'm not summarizing that as specific as I need to, but that was sort of um, you know, that was sort of uh what we discussed in that vein. In the same vein of dictating it elsewhere, we sort of felt that, you know, if it becomes uh quote unquote uh something that construction companies and builders want to do going forward, um that we would leave that up to them that in 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 terms of how they want to market that to prospective home buyers.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, we're picking up background audio. Is that, was that from you, Anita? I guess it was. Yeah.
I ju- I just said, thank you.
No, not, never mind. Uh, Mr. Kaufman, uh, you're still unmuted. If you don't mind, would you please mute yourself and then?
He's our next presenter.
Pardon?
Mr. Kaufman's our next presenter, too.
Oh, okay. All right, going to the sketch plan. Eighteen sixty nine North Atherton Street proposed retail market. And I'll just remind everyone that a sketch plan is simply a propose, a proposal uh to so solicit uh questions and and suggestions. Uh, it is not a formal development proposal yet at this point, so we're not going to have a vote on this, so. Um, so I guess a- as you say, Doug, Mr. Kaufman is going to be the first speaker, or is it Nicole Pollak?
Uh, we'll let Mr. Kaufman go.
Okay.
Uh, just give us a brief overview of your plan, Mr. Kaufman, and then we'll see if there's any comments.
Thank you. Um. My client would like to uh convert the uh existing Lourdes Garage and Service Center um to a retail market. Uh, I believe it's going to be a grocery-type store. Um, I I I'm not positive of that, though, honestly. Um. We did have a meeting with the planning commission. They were very helpful, clarifying some uh concerns that we had. Uh, we had done the service bay um expansion for the Lourdes back in two thousand nine. And the setbacks at that time were slightly different than what was depicted to me for uh after during the planning commission meeting. Um. I I have uh one question um for comment. Bull Alley, what I have listed as Bull Alley on back, yes, thank you. Um. Is that, is that a private access road, or is that a township road? I couldn't find it in the PennDOT maps.
It's, it's a private alley.
Okay, okay. Uh, the township had asked or requested that uh we uh complete the concrete sidewalk um in the back there, the the, you know, that small section there. I'll present that to my client to to verify, but I don't think that would be a problem. Uh, would, will we have a problem since it's owned by, it's not owned by the township, apparently, it's a private right-of-way? Will we have a problem getting permission to construct that?
Your, your, your client's a part owner of that private right-of-way. Has an undivided interest in it, so.
Okay, okay. I wasn't aware of that. Um. Really, uh, other than that, uh, do you have any questions or concerns pertaining to what we're planning on doing?
I'll follow up uh on that access to that uh Bull Alley, Doug. Is there already in in that lot planned access to Bull Alley from the rear or not?
No, this, this plan does not envision access. There's probably a six to eight foot grade difference.
Oh, really?
Yeah, Bull Alley sits up quite a bit higher.
Oh. Well, it just seemed to me it'd make a lot of sense for uh egress, uh, just like Taco Bell has egress into Bull Alley, uh make a lot of sense from this property to also have egress to Bull Alley.
I, that, it's a valid comment, um, and one we can take back up as part of land development plan, too.
Well, it it makes access to this lot a lot simpler for uh potential customers, because right now in eve, you know, in and out is all onto Atherton Street. So um anybody coming from the north uh headed south on Atherton Street has to uh has to somehow turn around somewhere to gain access. So if you have egress on Bull Alley, then uh then they can, they can enter on uh what's, what's the street that goes to Applebee's, whatever that street is?
Lane.
They can uh enter there and then uh en- enter this property from from the back. So anyway, that's my only comment. Any other comments from the board or from the public? Any suggestions, questions? Yes, Anita, go ahead.
I think that's a good suggestion, depending on where that access would be. Um, I support the extension of that sidewalk, because that will go right into the sidewalk that's right behind uh Taco Bell, so people can um have clear walking if if they wish. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Uh, if not, then what's the next step for the developer, Doug?
Now, they would need to submit a land development plan to us. And then that would go through the planning commission and come back to the board.
Okay, Mr. Kaufman, any final comment you want to make?
Uh, no, I I believe, I I didn't talk to the client, but um they did call in this morning and talk to uh Lake Brandall, the engineer. And uh it kind of sounded like they had an interest in possibly connecting Bull Alley. So I don't know how that's going to work if if we'll be able to do it, given the grades, what they are. Um, but it's certainly something that I will convey to them, and we'll see if that would be a possibility. Um, actually, right where we would probably entering, be entering onto Bull Alley is right where there is no sidewalk. So, you know, it would be a, it would be a good fit, really, if we can do it grade-wise. Um, I'm not sure how that would affect our stormwater management. Um, right now, we're currently uh proposing impervious, no impervious increase based on what's there right now. Um, as we discussed in the planning commission meeting, that's something that will have to be reviewed during land, land uh development submission, land development plan submission, so. I have no other comments or questions.
Thank you, Mr. Kaufman.
Thank you very much.
All right, I don't see any other hands raised, so we can move on to the next item on the agenda, which is uh six C Final Subdivision Plan, Barker Fields. You recall, we uh reviewed this at our last board meeting and took no action uh because there were recommendations from members of the board for the property owner to consider adding lighting to their entrance to five fifty. Uh. Who should start this, Doug? Is this Nicole, or or do you want the developer to start this?
Uh, if you'd like to hear from Nicole, I mean, you did probably a good job of recapping where we're at. Um, they have, um, they, the developers have agreed to install a light in the vicinity. Yeah, there you go. With the intersection, they're um fifty foot off the center line. Uh, I did get them to move it a little bit. It was a little further away, and I asked them to move it a little closer. They did do that. Uh, say, if you'd like, we can hear from Nicole or uh hear from Mr. John Sepp, who's representing the developers.
Let me ask the board, is there, you, you wish to have any additional information? You already have the skit, the plan, the development plan showing the location of a proposed streetlight in your attachments. Uh, any other questions? Let's see, Elliot has his hand raised. Go ahead, Elliot. You have to unmute yourself, please.
Is it appropriate to make a motion to approve?
Uh, yeah, I think you you can certainly move that. So you're approving the the proposed development plan for for this development. Uh, is there a second to the motion?
Second, Pam Robb.
Okay, uh, moved in second. Any comments? Betsy?
Uh, simply thank you to the developers for acceding to our um suggestions.
Any other comments? Anita, yes?
Yes, I too, since I spoke on this at the last meeting. Um, I too wish to commend um the owner, I I believe I mispronounced her ni- last name last time, it's Levi. Um, and for w- w- doing this action, which um the staff and uh folks believe is in a public safety interest. We, I I said I'd enthusiastically support it. I am enthusiastically supporting, and I do commend the developer for doing this.
Thank you. Any other comment? Uh, Doug, just, just to note, I I believe the the motion, uh, if it's okay with Elliot, should include uh conditional approval with completion of all items noted on each component letter provided by staff.
And the, and the streetlight.
And addition of a streetlight at the intersection Marion Way and Buffalo Run Road. All right, any other further discussion? Any comments from the public? Uh, seeing none, uh, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor, say aye, raise your hand.
Aye, aye.
Yeah, everybody raised their hand, said aye, so the motion passes. Moving on to the next agenda item, six D. The preliminary final land development plan for Penn Highland Micro Hospital and Medical Office Building. Uh, should we get a intro from Nicole Pollak on this, Doug?
Yeah. Yep, go ahead, Nicole.
Thank you. Uh, so Penn Highlands Healthcare is proposing a three-story micro hospital, be a little bit over eighty-two thousand square feet, and also a two-story medical office building that will be a little bit over thirty-two thousand square feet in the Patent Town Center Development, which is located in the planned commercial district at the intersection of Colonnade Boulevard and Waddle Road. Uh, this is a revision to a previously approved plan for Patent Town Center Development, and it will complete the build-out of the sixteen point two-six acre site. Uh, parking areas will be shared with the existing Cracker Barrel and the Sheets, and all appropriate parking and utilities will be um operational and maintained during the construction of the micro hospital and medical office building. Uh, there is no change to the access to the site. A new traffic signal will be installed at the main entrance, which will be by the Sheets. And um the planning commission does recommend approval for this plan with a couple of conditions, which include completion of all items on the staff comment letter, as well as the items in the traffic impact study.
Yes, part of the planning commission recommendation, I think the developer has agreed to do a pedestrian connection over to the cold park.
Yes.
And then, as we had, planning commission talked about, uh, a particular note, there's a comment twenty-seven in the trans review of the traffic impact study that uh I've been working, uh, the assistant engineer. Uh, Alexandra and I have been working with uh Mr. Khan from Hobbit or Engineering to get the details hammered out on comment twenty-seven, but as of yet, unless Mr. Khan tells me otherwise, we're not quite there on having the details of what they will do for uh the mitigations there. So I recommend that we proceed here, as noted on the agenda. Talk about the issues and see if there's anything else the board members have. And uh what we might end up doing is uh reviewing this again then in two weeks, and hopefully we'll have all those details in place, and we can put a final motion on the board or on the table for the board to consider at that time. Uh, with that, I'd ask Mr. Khan to uh and his team to make a presentation on on the plan and uh see if the board has any comments.
Okay, thank you, Doug. Thank you, Nicole, for going over um quite a bit. Um, the only thing I'd like to say is, um, you have Penn Highlands, they are proposing to build, which is a total of one hundred fifteen thousand square foot micro hospital and a medical office building. And not to re-review what Nicole did, but um I'll just go over some of the entrances, the three entrances to the site uh will continue to be utilized. Um, we are planning to add a traffic signal at the main entrance exit just west of the Sheets. If you could go to sheet eight, please. So the site, you know, it previously was set up. There's a service drive that circles the site. We're planning to retain that. Utilities are available onsite, you know, water, gas, sanitary sewer. Storm pipes are available. We're going to utilize as much of them as we can. The stormwater is located between this site and I ninety-nine. And our current designs show that it is adequate for to service this site. Um. We did agree at the planning commission meeting to install the sidewalk connection in that area, which is being pointed out right now. We do need to work out that agreement with the Colonnade LLC. We got some contact information today. I think we can move that along. Um, as Doug mentioned, we are working through the, some of the signal improvements on Colonnade. I am confident we will get through that here in the next few weeks. Just need to, we're just working on the details and uh getting our client comfortable with uh, you know, providing that. With that, I'd like to uh either turn it over to David Nitsky. He could describe a little more about the building if you guys are interested, or just turn it over. either turn it over to David Nitschke, he could describe a little more about the building if you guys are interested, or just turn it over for questions.
Yeah, go ahead, David. Yeah, I think the board will be interested in your comments.
Okay, I'm, uh, David, uh, Nitschke, I'm, I'm a principal with Core Architects. And, uh, along with MCF Architects, also out of Pittsburgh, uh, we make up the design team for the, uh, Penn Highlands, um, Hospital and Medical Office Building. Uh, if we want to go back to the, uh, the plan that we were just, uh, looking at, the overall site plan. If we would, please. Yes, thank you. Um, a- as Eric said, um, so we, uh, working in conjunction with Hall Baker Engineering, um, explored, uh, in the area of about seventeen options, um, in, in laying out this building on the property. Um, and again, we have a challenging, um, site, uh, again, I'm sure everyone's familiar with the, uh, the lay of the land on this property, uh, in that we have a, a main level, a main plaza level, uh, where, um, right off of Colonnade Boulevard, that basically at the same, uh, level, at the same elevation of grade um, as Colonnade Boulevard, uh, is the main, uh, level of this plaza, um, occupied currently by Sheets, uh, and by Cracker Barrel. And, uh, we situated the building, um, in such a way to, uh, make the most of the, uh, of the parking, uh, which we, um, do have to share again with, uh, with our tenants, um, on this property. And, uh, as you move to the top of the sheet, which is north, um, towards I ninety-nine, uh, the site drops off um, at the, uh, at that part of the, uh, the property, um, it's about sixteen feet lower than the, uh, than the main area, than, than the entry, uh, level from Colonnade Boulevard. Uh, again, as Eric said, we're going to maintain the main entrance, uh, to the left of Sheets to, uh, access the property. Uh, that'll bring you, um, straight into the, uh, straight into the new facility. And, uh, it was the desire of our client of Penn Highlands Healthcare, uh, to create a concourse style of drive and, and drop off. And, uh, that, that's the, again, that, that had arched that circular area, so, um, vehicles will pull in. Um, you come in, uh, facing the hospital. Um, that's the, uh, the portion of the building, um, running right to left. And, uh, the first level of the facility of the hospital, uh, is sitting, again, sixteen feet down, lower uh, than the main plaza. And, uh, the components, um, at that level, uh, the odd-shaped feature that you see at the very top of the sheet, uh, in, in gray, um, that area of the building is the, um, the, the main, uh, central utility plant. Uh, along with the receiving area, you can see, I think in this, uh, diagram, you can see the representation of a semi truck of the, of a vehicle there. Um, so again, that's, that's housing all of the, uh, the utilities and the, uh, uh, mechanical, electrical, uh, you know, the major plumbing, um, uh, equipment to operate the facility. Um, also down at this lower level, uh, within the hospital, uh, is the, uh, the surgical suite. Uh, there's three ORs, uh, one, one procedure room down there, uh, along with the, um, pre-op and post-op uh, facilities, um, to support, uh, those functions, uh, as well as the, uh, the dietary services uh, functions to support the inpatient areas of the hospital. Um, as we move up to the first floor, uh, of the facility, um, and that occupies the, the entire L-shaped portion of this diagram, um, again, running right to left, that, that's the hospital. Uh, the area, uh, the rectangle that you see, um, that where the cursor is now represents the medical office building. Uh, the two buildings are, are joined, um, by a, uh, a two-hour separation. Um, and, uh, the main entrance into the facility is at the corner where the MOB, the medical office building and the hospital come together. So again, as, as you come in late, as you come around the concourse, um, you will first see the emergency department at the first floor level, that's the uh, portion of the facility furthest to the right, and the entrance into the emergency department uh, is in the, the lower right-hand corner, uh, of the, um, hospital. Um, and, uh, just to the right of that, uh, the area that you see, uh, where there's, uh, a representation of, of three ambulances. Uh, that's the, uh, the ambulance bay, and that's where emergency vehicles uh, would, would park to bring patients into the emergency department. Um, as you would continue, um, to the left in your vehicle, um, around the concourse, again, you, you come to the corner of the building, um, where the, uh, hospital and medical office building come together, uh, that's the main entrance into the building. Um, and there's room, uh, ample room there for stacking of vehicles and, and for, uh, there's a covered, uh, drop-off area. Uh, you'll, you'll continue around, and the main entrance, uh, as you head south, the main entrance into the medical office building uh, is the, uh, extension, that bump out that you see at the very south end of the medical office building. On the first floor of the hospital, um, we will have a cafeteria component. Uh, as again, as well as the, uh, the major component on this level is the emergency department and those support spaces, uh, as well as the, uh, the imaging, uh, facility, the imaging department. Uh, moving into the medical office building, uh, we'll have a, a retail pharmacy, uh, as well as an inpatient pharmacy. Uh, this level will also include, um, at the, uh, the lower left corner of the building, uh, will be a rehabilitation, a physical, uh, therapy rehabilitation clinic, uh, as well as uh, women's, uh, women's imaging suite, um, stat lab, blood draw, and cardiology. Um, as we, uh, move up to the second floor, uh, both the hospital and the, uh, medical o- office building are, are two stories um, from the Colonnade Boulevard level, from the main plaza level. Uh, the second floor of the hospital is dedicated to the, uh, inpatient services. Uh, uh, and then the second floor of the medical office building, uh, that will house, uh, again, other outpatient, um, clinics, infusion, uh, lifestyle clinic, uh, visiting specialists and primary care. And, uh, these are aerial perspectives, uh, that, that take you around the building, and again, it was our, uh, client's desire, uh, to create a, a state-of-the-art facility, um, both, you know, with the services that they're providing, uh, as well as the, the architectural character uh, of the facility, uh, again, representing, uh, again, that this is the, uh, a state-of-the-art, uh, medical facility, inpatient and outpatient.
Okay, uh, questions or comments from the board? Pam, Robb, go ahead, Pam.
Um, I just have a question as far as CADA bus. Um, are there any bus stops, or is there some kind of, um, plan that the CADA bus service can come toward or in the past, the hospital?
Um, well, we are aware that there are two bus stops located on Colonnade Boulevard. But we have not had, uh, I guess, a request to have the bus enter the facility and, uh, enter onto the property to serve the facility.
Thank you.
Well, obviously, the, the on-demand part of CADA, um, I can't remember what they call it. Uh, that's available to, uh, senior citizens and, and residents with disabilities, they would be able to enter the site and drop off there at that front, drop off, as would the, uh, the county, uh, transit service, which also uh, provides transportation to folks.
It's the CADA rights, yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So, so all those services that are, you know, currently go to Geisinger or Mount Nittany and, and drop off right at the front, uh, with the shorter buses, they would also have access to this site. That's correct, right, Eric?
Yes.
Thank you.
Preventing them from going in there.
Yeah, I, I don't see anything would prevent, uh, the shorter vehicle in there.
Okay, Anita found the raise hand feature. Yes, Anita?
I did. Um, I had two questions. I noticed in the supporting material that our fire director, Steve Bear, had recommended that a fire hydrant be relocated sixty feet. Um, is that request going to be included in the final plans? And my second question, my second question is, is just depending on approvals, when would you anticipate construction beginning, and when would you hope the final, um, microhospital would be open for, uh, public use?
Um, I'll address the hydrant, uh, location, and then, uh, I'll turn that over to David Nitschke to answer the start of construction and the final completion. The hydrant I believe Steve is talking about is located on the service drive, and we, we do not have an issue relocating it. But I would like, I just need to get in touch with Steve to clarify and get it to where he would like it, but we will do that.
And then, uh, regarding the, uh, anticipated project schedule and, uh, anticipated start of construction, um, on, on the, I think, very aggressive side, we would be looking at, um, potentially starting, you know, starting to move earth uh, at the, uh, the end of August, sometime beginning of, of September, um, you know, early, early in the fall. And, uh, our construction managers are, are, are looking at a, uh, an eighteen-month, uh, construction period. Again, we, we um, recognize that that's aggressive, but, uh, again, it's our, our desire and our client's desire to, um, you know, get the, uh, get the project moving as soon as we can, and to be, uh, most efficient, uh, with, uh, with completing construction.
Thank you.
Okay, I, I have a question, uh, Eric, and this has to do with pedestrian pedestrian acts or pathways from the parking lot to the hospital and, and the medical building. Uh, I can't tell whether your, um, the spaces between parking spaces, uh, are going to be landscaped, or, you know, between aisles, you see, there's a, there's a narrow strip there. Are those going to be paved sidewalks? Are those going to be landscaping beds?
The, the one that's being pointed out right now is a sidewalk, that's a ten-foot wide sidewalk leading to the sidewalk, parallel in Colonnade Boulevard.
Good.
Which would connect up your, you know, your CADA shelters, your bus stop.
How about, how about over on the, uh, hospital side, all those parking areas?
Yeah, on that one.
Yeah, go ahead.
There's a, at the handicap stalls, we do have a sidewalk immediately in front of the vehicle. But for the bulk of that parking, there is a sidewalk just north of the access aisle C, so people will walk through the parking lot. And they will get up onto a curved, you know, sidewalk area, and then they will, you know, travel to the west or left on the sheet.
Will there be a, a, a crosswalk across the there will be a driveway for the ambulances, pardon?
There will be a striped crosswalk.
Okay, there, yeah.
Many of the other islands, though, we are landscaping them.
No, that's fine. I, I just was worried about pedestrians have to walk in, in the vehicle travel lanes to get from their car, you know, to, to, to the office building or to the, to the hospital, but since you do have those paved sidewalks, uh, in between lanes, that, that satisfies me.
Okay.
Any other comments or questions from the board or from the public? I don't see any raised hands. So Doug, are, are, are we taking a motion now, or we're going to wait for two weeks?
No, let's, let's wait, cause that
Okay.
There's some details that have to be worked out on exactly what equipment comes in under that comment twenty-seven, so. Um, there's a set of things that absolutely have to be included, and there's another set of things that could be included, and we're doing a little negotiating on that at the moment, so. Hopefully, we'll have that, uh, squared away and bring that back to you in two weeks.
All right, uh, I did not hear any board members object at all to this, uh, development plan. So, uh, with your patience, uh, Eric and David, uh, we will put this back on the agenda in two weeks for, for final board consideration.
Okay, thank you very much for your time.
Sure.
Yes, thank you.
Now, uh, I, I'm going to take the opportunity here to call a sh- a short recess, uh, a five-minute recess before we continue with the rest of our agenda. Well, I'm waiting for Elliot to show his face again.
Dr. Jones is with us now, Dan.
Yes, I saw your, your message to me. Well, I'm going to call the, the meeting back to order now, the, after this recess. So we're going to jump back in the, to the beginning of the agenda to item four C, Public Safety Policy Discussions on Standards for Use of Deadly Force. So do Chief Jolly, you want to start this discussion?
Yeah, certainly. So obviously, we, we started some conversations back in June of twenty twenty regarding some of the policies and procedures within the Patent Township Police Department, namely looking at our use of force standards that we have. And again, focusing more on use of deadly force, but then also on search warrant, our search warrant policy. And also our use of federal surplus programs. So we've had many, many conversations since June of twenty twenty. And the conversation about use of deadly force kind of got pushed to the back burner. And we haven't really discussed that since probably late, late last year. However, we always had the intention of bringing it back around so that we could have the discussions and talk about this topic. So like I said, we, we had, the board has passed two resolutions as a result of the conversations we've had. The first was to establish guidelines for our agency on participating in the acquired equipment in federal surplus programs. On the second, establish policy for the police department for our execution of search warrants. Dr. Ben Jones did offer a sample policy that he wanted the board to consider for adoption, changing the Patent Township Police Department's policy on use of deadly force. So tonight, according to the agenda, we're, we're just looking to bring this back on to, again, on to the, the table here to start the discussion. And I think that the, the purpose for tonight is to, to kind of give the board a little bit of background, particularly on where we stand right now as far as what the law is in the, in the state of Pennsylvania, what the policy is for the Patent Township Police Department. And to give you just a little bit of background and to kind of give you that, that information so we can start to move forward with these conversations. I did provide a document, I believe Alex might have had it up there for a moment, giving, again, some of the background and then also highlighting verbatim the state law from section five oh eight of title eighteen subsection A of the Pennsylvania Crimes Code. I'm not going to read the law verbatim. That is on the first page, though. I'm going to skip over that. I did also include in my document some of the landmark deadly force cases. And Alex, I think that's Dr. Jones's document, so I'm not sure if mine might be the attachment right before that.
Or C one is.
Yeah, that's it there. Yep. So I did include also just for the board's information, again, I don't know that it's where we need to head with this tonight. But just two of the landmark deadly force case, cases, which is Tennessee versus Gardner. That was heard by the US Supreme Court and decided in nineteen eighty five. And then also Graham versus Connor, also heard by the Pennsylvania Supreme Court, US Supreme Court, I'm sorry, not Pennsylvania, the US Supreme Court, and decided in nineteen eighty nine. The third page of my document, though, does talk about the current township policy on the use of deadly force. So this one I do want to get in, involved in here. This is, is almost verbatim out of, out of the law, the deadly force law in Pennsylvania. So I do want to, I want to go through this kind of section by section. Our policy currently states the Pennsylvania Crimes Code, Title eighteen, Chapter five, Section five oh eight, subsection A, related to the use of force in law enforcement, provides for the lawful and justified use of deadly force by a police officer only when he or she believes that the action is in defense of human life, including the officer's own life, or in defense of any person in immediate danger of serious physical injury, or when he or she reasonably believes both that such force is necessary to prevent the arrest from being defeated by resistance or escape, and the person to be arrested has committed or attempted a forcible felony or is attempting to escape and possesses a deadly weapon, or otherwise indicates that he or she will endanger human life or inflict serious bodily injury unless arrested without delay. And like I said, that is, that is almost verbatim from the Pennsylvania Crimes Code, Section five oh eight, Chapter five, Title eighteen, subsection A. The next section that we have is, is, is a little bit of a misnomer that, you know, a lot of times you hear that officers are some of the training in law enforcement is to shoot to kill. Our officers are trained to shoot to stop. So our officers are trained to fire their weapons to stop and incapacitate and assailant from completing a potentially deadly act as described in this general order. Another thing that a lot of times that we hear in law enforcement is how come they didn't just shoot at the person's leg or their arm? It's very difficult to, to hit a moving target that's small. So we train our officers to shoot at the center body mass or the largest body mass exposed. And then also our policy does state that where practical, our officers shall identify themselves and give a verbal warning of their intent to use deadly force. Our policy has a few definitions in, on it for reasonable belief, serious bodily injury, forcible felonies and lethal, less lethal force. And then lastly, it just talks about using deadly force if we have to, to, to deal with an animal issue. The last page I just wanted to also include was the current accreditation standard from the PA Chiefs of Police Standards Manual. And this just explains the requirement of what our policy must include to maintain our accredited status, as we mentioned earlier, in my report that we just attained our reaccreditation for the, for the next three years. But standard one, three, two says that a written directive stating that a peace officer, as defined in Chapter five of the Pennsylvania Crimes Code, shall only utilize deadly force when reasonable and justified to effect lawful objectives in conformance to the provisions of the Pennsylvania Crimes Code, other Pennsylvania statutory provisions and Pennsylvania and federal court decisions. Obviously, the federal court decision, we're talking about the two that I highlighted earlier in the document. And the narrative of that says that Section five oh eight, subsection A of the Pennsylvania Crimes Code provides provisions for the lawful and justified use of deadly force by a peace officer. Again, so that's why we go to that section of the law to, to make our, our policy for the, for the use of deadly force here of Patent Township. PH chief issues another statement, though, just saying that the issue of the utilization of force, of any force really, and also deadly force by law enforcement officers is continually being addressed in Pennsylvania and federal court decisions. It is vitally important that every law enforcement agency have a clearly defined and easily understood policy which complies with the law regarding the use of deadly force by its law enforcement officers. So that's just a real quick overview. I just wanted to, again, give you the background that gives you an idea of where the law is in, in the state of Pennsylvania right now and the fact that, again, our, our policy, current policy for the use of deadly force here with Patent Township is, is directly in line with Section five oh eight from Title eighteen.
Thank you, Chief. Dr. Jones, would you like to present your model deadly force policy to us?
Yes, I will. I will share my screen if I'm able to do that. Kind of who's in charge if it's possible to give me that power. Thank you.
You're a co-host. You can go ahead and share now.
Perfect. Thank you, Doug. Well, thank you, thank you to the Board of Supervisors. Thank you, Doug, for the opportunity. Sorry I was late, but I really appreciate being flexible. So some of these items are, you'll, they'll be familiar from the, from the summer. But that's been a few months, so I just want to make sure to, to go back over the, over it again. The, the current law in Pennsylvania, which is the policy that's currently on the books here in Patent Township, it goes back to the nineteen seventies. And so the reason that's important is that there were some very significant, as the chief mentioned, there were some significant US Supreme Court decisions in the nineteen eighties, specifically Tennessee v. Gardner in nineteen eighty five and Graham v. Connor in nineteen eighty nine that impacted constitutional law with regards to police deadly force. And there have been some concerns raised by various legal experts that the current law that's in Pennsylvania may not actually be quite up to the standard that, that we find in those later court cases. Tennessee v. Gardner, the importance of that case was before, before that was decided in many parts of the country, it was still legal for officers to use deadly force against a fleeing felony suspect, even if they didn't present a danger. And this was known as the fleeing felon rule. And in Tennessee Gardner, the Supreme Court ended that and declared that that was unconstitutional. It was, it was unreasonable seizure in violation of the Fourth Amendment. So that's sort of where the Pennsylvania law fits into the, these various Supreme Court cases. And another thing, another thing to keep in mind is, you know, we have state law, we have constitutional law. But at the local level, we can put in place standards to sort of go beyond what those, what's minimally required in both constitutional and state law. So we, we have the power to do that. You know, we have other policies in place that, you know, for instance, instructing officers not to engage in chokeholds. That goes beyond, you know, what state and constitutional law requires. In Pennsylvania, there has been some proposals to, to have a more stringent deadly force policy. The, most notably, the Pennsylvania Legislative Black Caucus. After the deadly shooting of Antoine Rose in the Pittsburgh area, they put forward House Bill sixteen sixty four, basically limiting the, what that would do would be limit the justification of police deadly force to protection of life against imminent threat. And so one of the things that you find in the proposed deadly force policy is, 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 is more in line with, with that view of really, you know, is it necessary to protect? Is deadly force necessary to protect against an imminent threat to life? If so, then, then it would be justified. But sort of beyond those circumstances, instructing officers not to use deadly force. So the chief already talked some about the current state law and the current policy. What I, what I want to bring attention to, and you know, this is not the most eloquently written law that is in existence here. But the, the second part here, because the first part of the law says, okay, you can use deadly force if necessary to present, prevent death or serious bodily injury to either yourself or someone else. But the second part is, is when is deadly force justified to prevent a suspect from escaping? And what's problematic about the current law and policy is that this subsection two here, all these disjunctions. So, you know, if, if someone committed or attempted a forcible felony, if that condition is met, as well as the condition that deadly force is necessary to prevent them from getting away, then deadly force should be justified. So we brought up like the example of the sheets. Someone goes in the sheets. They rob the sheets or they try to rob the sheets and then they run away and they're, they're not really immediate threat to anyone while they're running away, but that's, shooting them is the only way to stop them from getting away. According to current law, current policy that, by the, by the letter of it, it would be justified. And so if we want, you know, our policies to, to reflect the prioritization of protecting life, it seems like, you know, we might want a more stringent policy in place. As I mentioned, you know, there have been, you know, different legal experts who have, you know, suggested that the, the Pennsylvania law may not rise up to what Gardner requires, the nineteen eighty five case. If you've been following the Eric Gardner case in Minneapolis, one of the use of force experts that you may have seen testify is Seth Stodden. And he's the author of, one of the authors here of this book, and he's one of the individuals who, who's made that point that there's a lot of state laws that seem to fall a little bit short of what Gardner requires and Pennsylvania's law seems to fall into that category for the reasons I've discussed. So you can look at, you know, there's a lot of different, you know, standards and different policies out there. Some are less restrictive, some are more restrictive. And, you know, the Pennsylvania law seems to sort of fall, you know, between Gardner and the fleeing felon rule, which was struck down as unconstitutional eighty five. But, you know, we, locally, we have the opportunity to, to put in place higher standards and you look, you know, different places across the country. They have put in place more restrictive policies. One example is Philadelphia and they're, here in Pennsylvania and there, there are other places across the country. So you, you've seen the model deadly force policy. The overall principle is prioritizing the protection of life. So is, is it, is deadly force in this instant, instance necessary to protect against an imminent threat of, to life or serious bodily injury, rape or kidnapping? Those sorts of limited situations, yes, deadly force should be justified. And then the rest of the policy, what it really emphasizes is trying to put on paper some, some guidance on sort of more robust de-escalation policies requiring the exhaustion of other permissible options. The verbal warning, that's something that's already in the current policy. Prohibiting deadly force against someone who's only a danger to themselves. So if someone's suicidal and they may hurt themselves, but they're not, not in immediate danger to anyone else, wouldn't use deadly force in that situation. And also an emphasis on avoiding tactics that unnecessarily precipitate deadly force. And, you know, I, in the, in the model policy, I, I give, I give links to the various places where, where you can find these sorts of principles and, and other deadly force policies. The recommendations that have, have been put forward by the Police Executive Research Forum, they influence this dramatically. You'll see them referenced throughout. And I, I want to spend just a little bit of time on that because I think it would, you know, I think it'd be very important to put in place a more stringent deadly force policy locally. You know, but at the end of the day, I think it's, you know, it's important that tactics sort of line up with the sort of policies that are on the books. And, you know, something that has come up in discussions locally, I know the Ferguson Police Department was kicking around the idea in the, one of the resolutions the State College Borough passed over the summer was the idea of maybe bringing in the Police Executive Research Forum to provide some training on de-escalation. And I, I think if, if there's still interest in the community with the police departments, I think, and obviously, you know, with the vaccines coming and, and maybe the opportunity to do more things in person like, like the sort of training that perf could provide, that could be really valuable and something that we might want to pair as we sort of look at the deadly force policy. And the reason why I think this is important, I, I want to bring up an example, and this was a, a fatal shooting that happened over the summer in Sarasota. And Adrian Stevenson is the, the woman pictured here in the middle of the screen. And she was, had a history of mental illness, was suicidal, was in her sixties, was sixty-three years old. And so her family called police for help because she was, she was suicidal, she was dangerous, she was, she had a, she had a weapon, she had a knife. And police got to the scene and she had, she had a flay knife to, to her neck, told her to drop it. She didn't drop the knife. They, then she, she's pointed it at officers. They, then she, she pointed it at officers. They tased, tasered her, taser didn't work, and then moved pretty quickly to using deadly force. And this is a case where, you know, this woman was 63, was frail. I think, you know, you look at this, not an immediate threat, this, the opportunity to continue to get de-escalation seemed to be very much available to the officers. And if you look at the Sarasota County Sheriff's Office and deputies, it was deputies from this office who responded. You know, they receive very similar training to, in, in some ways, similar to a lot of officers here locally. They get CIT training. All the, all the officers in the office received this training. The office, officers on the, on the scene had received 120 hours of CIT training. And the, I think we see incidents like this. And a lot of times the reaction is, well, we need, we need more de-escalation training. A lot of times the response is, well, we are getting de-escalation training. And with a lot of things in policing, the devil's in the details. And, you know, CIT training, there's a lot of focus on verbal de-escalation, which is, which is important and officers need that. But if verbal de-escalation doesn't work, like what's the next step? And, you know, we had this sort of instant, incident there where it didn't work out very well. And when you look at sort of the body of evidence, the research on CIT training, there, there's not a lot of evidence that it's super effective in reducing the risk of injury or death to individuals with mental illness during a police encounter. And so getting training on more robust de-escalation tactics where, you know, you're getting the verbal de-escalation, but also repositioning and, and more robust de-escalation tactics so that in that, you know, that example that I showed earlier from in Sarasota, you know, fatal deadly force isn't used, you know, within a minute of, of the encounter. And for a lot of different, you know, as we look at, you know, different training, different policies, you know, the gold standard of like, is this effective, effective or not, is randomized control trials where you're randomizing who's getting a particular training and then, you know, looking at, is this effective? Are we seeing positive results? And there has been that, that sort of gold standard of, of, of research, looking at ICA T training that perf provides. And the results have been very encouraging. You see both a significant, this is the, this sort of study was done in the Louisville Metropolitan Police Department. And you find a significant decline in use of force, citizen injuries and officer injuries. So it's not just something that is safer for suspects, but it's safer for police. It's a win-win all around. So and I just, I can share my, my presentation here with Doug. These are some sort of videos here. Folks are interesting in terms of like, what this more robust de-escalation looks like, especially the sort of training that, that perf provides. And, you know, what perf did when they were developing this training is that they went over to the UK where a lot of the, you know, most of the officers in the UK don't carry guns. And so how do we deal with someone that has a knife, who has a club? How can we resolve this situation without having to resort to deadly force? And, you know, what I tried to capture with the proposed policy was sort of putting on paper principles that are in line with that. But I guess what I want to emphasize is if we can pair revised policy with, with training, I think that would be, be the most effective. So thanks so much for the opportunity. I will stop sharing here and obviously happy to answer any questions folks have.
Thank you, Dr. Jones. Any questions or comments from the board? Any questions or comments from the public? Okay, I see on the agenda, the process now is, since we've gone through the the things we ought to be doing at this point, sharing information and collecting input, we can now take this up in two weeks at the board meeting on April 28th. And ask our, our chief if he has any proposed changes from the local standard, taking into consideration Dr. Jones' proposed model policy. So let me go back and see if there are anything that the board members or the public wishes to comment on, if this is a inappropriate way for us to proceed to revisit this in two weeks. Ma'am, yes?
Dan, will there be an opportunity for the public to respond at that time after Chief Kelly gives his recommendation?
Oh, sure. Yeah. If you're attending the meeting or you can always speak up, of course. Well, go ahead, Doug. I know you're going to expand on that answer.
Yeah, I don't, yeah, there, there's always an opportunity at, at meetings to respond. We are also going to set up a couple of specific. We're going to call them listening sessions. It'll be virtual because we're still in COVID and we'll, we'll schedule those first couple of weeks. So Chief Jolly and, and Dr. Jones will be available and I'll help moderate and we'll just open it up to the public and we'll take comments at that point. The board won't be involved in those, but we will collect all those comments, record the sessions and make sure the board has access to all that so they get all the, the public comment. So this will be an ongoing process. Probably a fairly aggressive schedule right now. We'll try to stay on it, but this is probably as fast as we're going to get there. If we need more time, we'll take it. But I will say every step along the way, I'm going to ask the board members, if you have input, please provide it as soon as you can. So we can respond and get back to you or incorporate those things into a potential for future policy.
Pam Robb, go ahead.
I want to thank Chief Jolly and Dr. Jones for taking on this issue during this time. I'm looking forward to just the more information, if Dr. Jones can provide any other information to our board so we can just, you know, digest what's going on. For me, it's, it's kind of rough. Being a person of color, being a former police chaplain, I've seen both sides. So it's, it's, it's hard. And I'm just hoping for patience, understanding for both sides to come together so we can resolve some of the issues that continue to plague our, our, our United States. It's not just patent township. It's not just state college. This is throughout the United States. And I'm, I'm just so overwhelmed at the issues that are happening. And that through a few bad apples, the police department, like I talked to Chief Jolly, have been painted that all officers are bad. We have an outstanding police department and, and I continue to applaud Chief Jolly and our officers here. But I've also come from, lived in Camden, New Jersey, where we were number one in most deadliest city in the United States. I've been stopped by the police. And due to the climate, people of color are afraid. They're afraid to be stopped by a police officer in fear. The lieutenant in a uniform who was stopped complied to what the police officer said was pepper sprayed, beaten and threatened not to report it. So what kind of message does that send to our community about officers across the board? Chief, I commend you. I stand by you. You continue to make patent townships, police officers, one that we can respect to have compassion and understanding and see the person and not the color. So as we move forward on this issue, I hope each and every one of us, our public that's listening can take the time to see each other for not the color of their skin, but who the individual is and understand each of our cultures that we are one. And until we think as each other, as one, working together to make this a better place to live, it starts now, not just by words, but by action. So thank you.
Thank you, Pam. Seeing no, no other hands up for comments. We'll revisit this in two weeks. So now we're going to move back to the agenda where we dropped off. Item 6E, planning and zoning, the preliminary final land development plan for Rocky Properties. Nicole, you, you want to start this?
I can do that. So the site of this property is at 670 Grace Woods Boulevard. It is 6.74 acres. And it is located in the office buffer rural residential and the I-99 overlay districts. The applicant is proposing to change the use of the existing structure on the site from residential to office space. There will be some upgrades made to the site as well, which include widening the driveway, providing ADA parking, an installation of the shared use path across Grace Woods Boulevard. And the other item of note is that the footprint of the building is not going to change. They are going to remove a carport that is noted on the plan and they're also going to add some landscaping buffers around the driveway. The Planning Commission did review this at their April 5th meeting and they do recommend approval conditional on all staff comments being satisfied.
Okay, thank you. Anita, go ahead.
I was pleased to see that the plans include widening the driveway. When I was, I drove by today and the place where people will come out from that driveway, it's right across from the Grace Woods Geisinger Medical Center. And I'm just wondering if there is any concern going forward, how many people are going to be going into this new office facility, if there's going to be any traffic issue since the folks going into the Grace Woods Geisinger Center. That's a pretty busy spot. I took one of my poor little pictures that I've sent to Alexandra and Doug, if you want to show that up on the screen. But for the traffic that'll be egressing the property. And I just wondered if that, if the widening of the driveway is going to, you know, help to deal with any traffic concern that might arise as people go in and come out.
The widening is required so they can provide a lane in and a lane out. So that's minimum for any, for any non-residential use.
Yeah, this is the, yeah, this is the picture that you come at.
Yeah, the proposed use is an office. So I can't remember. It's a few thousand square feet, a couple thousand square feet.
1800 to be exact.
Okay. And so I, I will say, I mean, the required parking is eight parking spaces. So if that gives you a sense of how much traffic, there will not be there. There's only eight parking spaces. I will say specifically, this site is intended as a back office operation for, for a restaurant. Jersey Mike's will give Matt a plug here. And you can, you can try and match too and plug yourself. So we don't, we don't foresee any traffic issues. These they're not generating less than 500 trips a day, which is the minimum to trigger a traffic, traffic purview or traffic review, a traffic impact study. Again, we don't foresee anything. If they grow in the future significantly, again, you know, if they come back with another land development plan with a much, much bigger building, a lot more traffic, they could get into a traffic impact study requirement. And, you know, ultimately it could mean some upgrades at intersection, but I don't think that's on Matt's horizon right now.
No, I needed, I needed to give you a little bit of insight. This, this office is meant for five people. My, myself, my wife and, and three assistants that help us. And I'm on the road 90% of the time. So theoretically, there'll be about four people a day. So I'm hoping it doesn't create a catastrophic traffic nightmare.
Okay, good.
I live around the corner in Patton Township, so this is just convenient for us.
Well, it's a beautiful location and best of luck to you. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Any comments from the public? Seeing none. I will entertain a motion from a member of the board to, yes, Elliot, go ahead. Oh, you need to unmute yourself, Elliot.
So moved.
Okay, you're, okay, you're moving that the conditional approval pending completion of all items noted on each comment letter provided by staff. Is that your motion?
That's exactly what I would have said.
Second, Anita. Yeah, Anita seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Let's have a vote. Everyone in favor of the motion, raise your hand, say aye.
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 Everyone approved, so the motion carries. Thank you very much. Yes, you're welcome.
Thank you.
Next item, 6F, zoning amendment request to add a fitness center as a conditional use to I-1 industrial district. You want to take this, Doug?
March 24th meeting, the board received this as an initial request. They did refer it to the Planning Commission. Planning Commission did expedite the review and have returned a recommendation back to the board. That recommendation specifically is to approve adding fitness center to the list of permitted conditional uses in the I-1 district. As you recall, we had a discussion, I think it's last meeting, about the inter municipal zoning agreement with college that pertains to industrial zoning. We did ask College Township Council to take a look at this request also. They did so at their April 1st meeting and they do also recommend approval. List of current permitted uses, conditional uses in the I-1 and the IRD district are included. And I think with that, I will look to the Requesters Representative, Mr. David Gaines, and ask him to provide some additional background if he'd like.
Thank you, Doug. Thank you, everyone, for having us here this evening. You have a busy meeting as always, as far as I can tell. So we appreciate the time. We just first want to thank you again for having us on the agenda. I do have a request in the form of, I guess, a couple of requests. And before I kind of explain that, I do want to emphasize that we appreciate everyone moving the matter forward so far. The background of the request is fairly simple. This is our third meeting. We, as Doug mentioned, started off with the supervisors. We then went to the Planning Commission. Of course, we're back. And we will be here if everything goes well and we can adequately address your questions this evening. For a fourth meeting, which would be on the public hearing to formally amend the ordinance. That in many ways is to get us to the starting line. Uh, i- if, if the uh, matter proceeds as a conditional use, that would be, you know, you figure another couple of meetings. There's a parking matter that needs to be worked out in terms of off-site parking. And then land development would need to occur because of a change of use. Uh, so we're looking at a minimum of six meetings. Possibly more than that. And I mean, in a worst case scenario, it could be a good number more than that. Uh, that is with the other background in mind, which is that the client is really not, uh, I say not doing anything to the building. There will be some minor work done. Uh, forgive me, I think I look like a zebra right now, but in the other the sun emerged from the cloud behind my office blinds here. Um, a- anyway. Um, the, the client is doing minimal work to the building. Uh, and the client, of course, is trying to continue working towards this school year uh, in terms of bringing clients on board. And to do that, that's going to require moving forward pretty quickly. And the notion of having additional meetings, uh, especially several more additional meetings is pretty daunting. So with that, we're, in addition to asking for the formal amendment change, uh, I would ask two things. First, please do strongly consider despite recognizing that the circumstances are that in the industrial zoning district, there are all conditional uses. In my perfect world, first of all, I wouldn't have stripes all over my face. But second, um, we would um, be able to proceed with this use as of right or effectively as of right, so that we do not need to go through the conditional use process. Um, second, if we could at all put our heads together moving into next month's meeting, so that perhaps something like the parking issue is addressed, then rather than us needing to, for example, come back to your, your meeting after that, uh, just to continue this conversation, we would sincerely appreciate it. That's both, again, for the reasons that I mentioned involving the client, but also so that we don't need to keep using your time for what I think in concept is a fairly simple proposal. Although, again, we recognize the process, and by no means are we intending to knock or undercut anybody's opinions here. Evan Meyer is on the line, and I, I think he may want to add something if there's no discussion on that issue or, or, you know, discussion at this time.
Yeah, tha- thanks, thanks, David. If I could just take uh, less than a minute, really. Um, I wanted to also say, um, what David said, that I wanted to let you know how much, um, we appreciate the unanimous support. The, the last supervisor's meeting we presented to move this along quickly. Uh, also, uh, the Patton Township Planning Commission that supported it anonymously and College Township. Uh, we've also received a pretty enthusiastic reception for the project by residents of the area. Uh, there, I, there were, I guess there was a reporter watching the last meeting, and there was an article in StateCollege.com and the Gazette, and so we've got a lot of positive feedback by that. Um, so I wanted to emphasize what, what David said, that um, again, time is of the essence to get this in operation by August. Uh, you know, we're pushing up against a hard deadline. One thing I do want to address specifically, when I spoke, when we were both, David and I at the planning commission, uh, they asked about parking, um, and David just brought that up, uh, how many spaces there were uh, previously at the old Nittany Gymnastics, which is uh, where uh, we're kind of following in their footsteps. And uh, there were, there were twelve spaces there, twelve parking spaces. There's at least three times as many spaces at this location, and there's a broad area in the middle of the lot that would probably um, allow itself for additional spaces with easy um, circular motion around there. They're just not there, painted lines at this point. So um, again, uh, we want to be mindful of the process. Uh, we want to be, uh, we want to adhere to all the, the proper processes and procedures that that we need to, we need, we need to go through. Um, but um, as David said, I'd like to also add my uh, support that um, whatever we can do to put our heads together and move this quickly uh, through, since we've gotten all this support, it would really be helpful. Uh, thank you again for listening.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Doug, you want to respond?
Yeah, first, in Patton Township, we, as a general rule, will take care of land development plans and conditional uses concurrently. So it's not a, it's not a one-two item. It's a, again, it's uh, we'll, we'll take care, take them together. Um, the conditional use obviously just gives the township another opportunity to look at the plan, the specific use in detail, and provide additional uh, conditions that may be appropriate, as we do for every other use that's in the uh, industrial zone. Uh, so I would also recommend that the board uh, continue to follow our process as we have. Uh, they need to submit a land development plan. That is the process through which uh, staff and the planning commission, the board, all get a chance to look at the, look at the uh, proposal. Uh, make sure that everything conforms to our regulations. Bring up all those questions that might need to be answered and make sure we've done our due diligence on, on doing those. In terms of parking and how much parking is required, that would be one of those items that would be determined through the land development process. And I strongly urge the board not to provide uh, partial approvals or anything along those lines. Uh, the process is to put your information together on a land development plan and as detailed in our code. Submit that as detailed. Uh, if it's a good plan, tight and solid, and they've got uh, rationale for, you know, how many parking spaces they think they believe they need and, and, you know. Um, from the date you, I mean, the potential that land development plan and a conditional use could all be approved within about six, seven, or eight weeks. Um, that's not, you know, that's the plan, the Rock, I think the Rocky Properties went through on that schedule. Um, they probably submitted six weeks ago, and they got their approval tonight. So uh, those are my recommendations and guidance I would like to give to the board.
Yeah, I, I'll second what uh, Doug just said. Uh, there, you know, first of all, uh, I'm not inclined, I'm, I'm not speaking for the board, I'm speaking for myself. I'm not inclined to uh, grant any favoritism to any particular proposer. You know, not, not to single you out, but uh, I think we have to be fair to everybody who submits plans and goes through the process we've established. And, and then the process is not designed to impede or delay any proposal. In fact, it's just the opposite. We uh, I think Doug and his predecessor, Tom Kurtz, uh, were very good at, at uh, making sure our process is uh, as speedy as practical. Because we're not trying to impede development in our township. Uh, so that, that said, uh, let me see if the board has any questions or comments. Uh, Elliot, go ahead. You have to unmute yourself, Elliot. There you go.
Two things. I agree that we need to follow procedure. I also think we're here to move along uh, projects that uh, will have a positive influence to the township. Right up the street from here, there was a use of a uh, a fitness facility, a different building. I'm uh, I'm not sure under which auspices it was approved, but uh, it caused no problems, as far as I know. They now consolidated on Westley Parkway. But I, I think this is a, an excellent idea. So let's see the plan come in so that we can look at it and, and uh, not, I don't, when we ask for a plan, we're, we're not intending to waste people's time. Uh, if we thought there was some giant disaster being proposed, we'd say so right up front. So uh, I think that's an important point, that uh, let's, let's see the plan, and let's go ahead with it.
Betsy?
Uh, can, thank you. Can somebody quickly explain the difference between uh, or the process? How the process would differ um, in a conditional use versus uh, uh, use as a right?
I'll, I'll, I can take a stab at that if you'd like. Um, there, there are two main issues that arise with conditional uses. Um, the one that's comes into play most often is a conditional use provides the planning commission and the board to apply additional conditions that may be uh, uh, required or maybe um, valid due to the specific use in the specific location of the, of the use within a district. Uh, those things might include typically, you know, an industrial district, let me just say, probably hours of operation, uh, some aspects of lighting. Um, might be things that might be come up, uh, additional buffering, maybe fencing, things like that. Not, not that any of these things apply specifically to uh, this use, but those are the types of things that generally the, the board and the planning commission would be looking at. Uh, the other aspect of conditional use that comes up less often and probably is less applicable to this is that uh, conditional use, conditional use means a use may be uh, appropriate in some locations within a district, and it may be inappropriate in other locations within a district. And the best example I have for that, that probably has to do with churches in residential districts. Uh, almost twenty years ago, we had somebody come, uh, wanted to put a very large church in a very rural location in Patton Township. I mean, this was a church that was going to have a parking lot with five hundred spaces. Um, and churches are a conditional use within both the A one and the R one and the R two. At that time, the board deemed that it was very inappropriate to put a very large church in a very rural area, primarily for traffic access. Um, and that, you know, such a church would be more, more, much more appropriate uh, closer into the suburbanized, suburban part of the township rather than the rural. So those are the two aspects of conditional use. I think, Betsy, did I miss any? Betsy Dupree, did I miss anything there?
No, I, I think, I mean, so simply, there are three kinds of uses. One is a use by right. One is a use by special exception, which we of often say is a use by right under special exception, and the other is a conditional use. And Doug has outlined exactly why uses are deemed to be conditional. You recently just viewed this issue uh, with the equine facility out on Buffalo Run, correct? That was a conditional use. And part of the reason that project was a conditional use in the ag district was exactly some of the issues that Doug is raising, which is hours of operation in an ag area. Um, potentially traffic, although horses don't tend to drive cars, so that was a good thing. But the, the point is that gives the township certain um, procedural avenues in which is, is to, to address a use in their district. Um, there are many of our fellow jurisdictions in which ha- that have industrial uses as a conditional use in part because of the varied types of industrial uses you might have or uses you might have in that district. So this is not unusual. I will say to you outside of Patton Township, the process here is, is, is very much streamlined, and we do have some of our, some of your other COG members who would require people to go through the steps separately. Um, and not be able to conjoin or bring together a land development plan and a conditional use. Uh, there are townships that require you to do your subdivision plan before you get land development. So I think you have the ability in Patton, and you've demonstrated that you could give this applicant a, a speedy process through without, yet still have your planning commission and the board of supervisors and your staff do all of their review as they should.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the board? Uh, how about the public? Anybody uh, from the public online here wishes to comment?
This is David Gaines again. I can jump in.
Sure, go ahead, David.
I do want to make clear, we, we obviously respect the processes that Patton Township has, and to the extent that anything I've said suggests otherwise, I, I apologize. Um, basically, you know, as you can imagine, and, and has been, has been highlighted, the property owner wants to move quickly. I, I haven't spoken to the per, or the, the client. Um, if we can move expeditiously through this, and that really the most expeditious process is to proceed as Doug indicated, then that is what the process is. And we're not asking for any exceptions to the process. Uh, however, I guess what I was asking is if there are any ways within the process to speed it along beyond the timeline that Doug mentioned, then we would certainly be interested in that. But if that's what the process is, that's what the process is. And certainly, we're not seeking anything more than that.
Okay, uh, uh, I will entertain a, a motion from a member of the board to uh, schedule a to approve this. What, what's the wording I should use, Doug? Uh, approve the plan or just schedule a public hearing for?
Hearing.
Schedule a public hearing.
And we're, we're gonna have to review an ordinance. Uh, the ordinance will be fairly short. It'll be, say, add this use to the uh, you know, list of conditional uses for the I one district. Um, but we do have to have, this comes under the purview of the municipality's planning code. Uh, so we do have to have a public hearing. Uh, David had emailed me earlier today asking about the date of the public hearing. Um, my recommendation is May twenty sixth. I read the MPC two or three times trying to figure out exactly all the notices we have to do for this type of a rezoning amendment, and I would, my recommendation is we schedule it for the twenty sixth, so we have at least thirty days to get our notices out. Um, I, thirty days is the most that's required under any of the aspects of the municipality's planning code. I hate for um, somebody else in the I one zone to uh, contest this on a procedural basis and have it overturned. So my recommendation is to schedule for May twenty sixth, and we'll start putting notices out as we need to uh, starting tomorrow.
Okay, Betsy?
Yes, I would like to move that we schedule a public hearing for this on May twenty sixth, and I add my enthusiastic uh, support. I will tip my hand at this, at this point. Um, everything that I've heard and seen sounds very exciting in this project, and the response from the community of gymnasts in the area was um, impressive, and I suggest that, that if you're concerned about uh, the the um, the response from a public hearing, that you activate that network some more, so.
Thank you. Uh, just to clarify, your motion is to add uh, fitness centers to the list of permitted conditional uses in the one A district.
Yes, and sorry, yes, and that date of May twenty sixth, which seems to be as
On May twenty sixth, okay.
As soon as possible, yeah.
Is there a second? Elliot seconded. Uh, any further discussion? Comments? Seeing none, let's vote on the motion. All those in favor, raise your hand, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Uh, all, all approved, so the motion carries, and we will go ahead and schedule that public hearing for May twenty sixth. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You as well. Have a nice night.
You too. So we are skipping uh, six G rezoning request for four seventy-four and four eighty Douglas Drive. That's going to be on the agenda in two weeks. So the next item is seven, administration. Seven A is uh, update on the American Rescue Plan Act. Doug, you want to take this?
Yeah, I wanted to start talking about this and get us all thinking about it. Um, we are all anticipating guidance to come from the U S Treasury Department. It will not come probably before U S Treasury releases the money, which is sometime mid to late May. I'm sure U S I'm sure U.S. Treasury will take every second they can to finish that guidance before it is um, it is provided. Larry thinks it might even be beyond that. So um, anything we tell you today is um, take with a grain of salt until the final guidance comes out. We don't have any really hard and fast answers for you. Uh, we do know a few things. Anything that was permitted under the CARES Act plan that was adopted last year by the federal government is, will be, will be uh eligible under this, but all the other issues that people have been talking about um are still more or less up in the air. But what I wanted to do today was start talking or get people thinking about process. Um, we have approximately 1.56 million dollars that we will receive. It will come in uh two tranches as the wonky folks in DC say. Uh, we'll get one in June. Uh, we expect of 2021 and we'll get uh the last half of it a year after that in 2022. There will, the expectation is there'll be a lot of things that we could spend this money on. A lot of things. Larry reminds me again that uh nothing is in, is, is 100% yet. Um, but uh, you know, we have several different types of expenses that we could use these on. I did have Larry uh put together a little information on uh what we have uh funds we've already spent or expended or, or obligated for certain things. Uh, that would be a category of funds where we might, you know, think of it as paying ourselves back. Now, that's probably under the operating expenses I notice, I noted. Uh, remember um, when we did the CIP last year, we put off several issues uh because we didn't have funding to carry those forward in 2021. That would come under capital infrastructure as a type of project. Larry says, let's wait until we get a final guidance from Treasury about debt reduction, but uh depending on who you ask and who you listen to, debt reduction is uh eligible for municipalities. It's definitely not eligible for states. But it could debt reduction or tax relief uh could our potential uses. And then, again, as through the CARES Act, aid to businesses and aid to individuals are, should be eligible expenses under the American Rescue Plan. Um, I've talked to a few folks um at the Borough and at the county about maybe piggybacking on some of their current programs. Uh, the Borough does uh renex assistance uh for folks and the, obviously, the uh county, I think everybody's heard that the county is providing grants for small businesses uh affected by COVID. So those are two things that we could look at, uh, which kind of relates to the last bullet point then. Um, I would encourage you, if you have ideas of how we should be expending these funds, let's try to piggyback with an existing program rather than try to create something uh new. Your, the staff on this is probably Larry and I, so new programs are, are, are not going to be high priorities. So with that, uh, again, you know, I think the biggest thing to start thinking about maybe tonight is, you know, how do we go about getting the list of, you know, what are the potential uses we could, you know? Who all do we want to reach out to and ask to uh provide uh recommendations on the use of these funds? Um, is it narrow as in the board? Is it wide as in anybody and everyone who wants to give us a suggestion or is it somewhere in between that? Do not have to answer that question tonight, but if anybody would like to start discussing these things, uh now is a good time to start.
I have an opinion, but I, I'm going to defer to other members of the board first if you wish to speak to that. Uh, Betsy, go ahead.
Well, I'm going to come out the gate saying um, my knee jerk is the, the more, the merrier. Um, I participated in an event last night, yeah, the night before last on the um climate forum. And the, we got a tremendous amount of ideas from that. I think that there was a broadcast invitation. And um, as somebody who will be looking through those ideas, I was very excited to have that many to look through. The, the comment that I have right now also is this is a, a big chunk of money. It is uh something that is getting a lot of publicity, for better or for worse. It behooves us to obviously uh be wise about the spending. But I, thinking it also, it might also prove us to be pu- very public about uh one or two of the uses of that um money. And one thing that comes to my mind is of something physical, geographical that such as the bike path or park and to then uh have a a sign or have some information somewhere. This is your federal tax dollars at work. Uh, this is the uh whatever we want to call it. And of course, I realize we have to be careful not to be overtly uh political about that, but I'm, I'm thinking about the goodwill here between um the federal government and local citizens.
Thank you, Betsy. Any, any other board members wish to speak to this? Uh, okay, I'll go ahead. My personal opinion, uh, well, in, in my view, since we are experiencing a, a reduction of revenue because of COVID, uh especially in the earning income tax uh receipts that we'll be receiving, uh, I think uh re- restoration of, of tho- of that reduction so we can maintain our, our township's operating budget i- is uh for me is a priority, but that's only going to take a, 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 a portion of the 1.56 million. Uh, it's, we don't need the whole thing for that kind of uh mi- uh mitigation in, in our, in our budget. That's just my opinion. And then after that, uh, Betsy, I agree that it, there, this is like a one-shot pretty big fund of uh, pretty, pretty big amount of funds that we can do a lot of different things with. Uh, so we need to figure out a way to prioritize uh what's best for us, our taxpayers, for our citizens in our township. What, which of the many proposals and ideas that, that we are bound to receive deserve, you know, the most attention uh until the money's gone? And we, and we have plenty of time. We, we have three years, no, four years. We have four years to spend this money, so uh, no, three years. Doug, I mean, anyway, doesn't matter.
December, by December of 2024.
Correct. So this is 2021, so 2021, 22, 23, 24.
Say three and a half.
Three and a half years. Uh, we have three and a half years. It's not, there's no big rush. So I, I think uh, as, as Betsy said, we need to deliberate deliberative action and take our time. And certainly seeking public input, i- i- I agree with that. And it can, we can figure out how, how we're going to do that, whether it's going to be a survey or whether we're going to have a forum like the Climate Action Forum was. Uh, but some way, yeah, let's, let's think about doing that uh later this year, you know, after we get the regs. We have to know what, what the regulations are before.
Exactly. We don't know if we're allowed to spend it on a, a bike path. So we have to wait to find out.
Yeah, okay. All right. End of speech. Anita, then, then Elliot. Go ahead, Anita.
Um, yes, I support what you're saying, Betsy and Dan. The thought came to mind as we survey our staff and our various committees. I know, for instance, the Recreation Advisory Committee has had folk coming to them saying, couldn't you put a bathroom in Circleville Park um or uh Burnell Park? Or there might be, as we surveyed the community about their needs um and their priorities, uh something, I think there's merit in having something physically tangible uh that meets a need. And of course, I don't know what, if anything, can be done to support affordable housing as part of this. I see that one of the thoughts is that um funds could be transferred to a private nonprofit. You know, is there a way working with Habitat for Humanity? I, but again, I don't know specifics on that, but I agree with casting a wide net and what a wonderful opportunity to engage the community in a visioning process about what's important in Patton Township, what they would like to see in Patton Township. So, thank you.
Elliot?
I just want to urge that we are organized with this and transparent so that uh we gather all the ideas together and deliberate over them. I, I don't think it's easy to do that in an in- individual or even as a group of uh our meetings as they're now structured. I think this might be separate, uh some separate sessions where this is the, this is the only thing we talk about. And uh, it'll, obviously, some of the things we talk about will overlap things we're doing elsewhere, but uh we have to organize it and have to get as much input so that we make the wisest decisions we can.
Pam, you have anything to contribute?
I, I agree with Elliot and the rest of the board. Transparency is the key. We have to be transparent, whatever we do. And thanks to Doug and Larry, thank you for your input and, and your, your research in doing this and keeping us abreast. Thank you.
So Doug and Larry, do you have enough input at least for now?
Yeah, Larry wants to know if anybody else read the 28 pages from PSATs.
I, I read the 28 pages from PSATs.
Two of them.
Uh, or I, wasn't it PML you were talking about or?
Well, PML.
I, I attended the PML presentation, but I also read the 28 pages.
Yeah, I, I'd emailed out a separate thing that PSATs had provided here just, I think, this morning or yesterday. There was 28 pages of questions and answers.
Which totally contradicted everything that was in the PML res- uh PML uh presentation, which, which got me all nervous, so I ran over to Doug's office.
Well, at least uh PSATs uh deal solely with townships. Uh, PML, you know, they're, most of their members are much larger municipalities.
I think the only thing the two, the only thing the two agreed on is we can't spend the money on any pension, uh, on the pensions.
On pension, okay, yeah.
Yeah.
Right. But I, I've, I've got enough information to start putting together um a program. I, you know, I don't think we'll need to talk about this for a couple of months as, as, as you said, we'll wait until we have the guidance, I suspect. We'll get the guidance and then there'll be a whole lot of questions and then we'll get guidance on the guidance. And then there'll be some more questions and we'll get some FAQs on the guidance on the guidance. So we'll keep you apprised.
That's exactly what happened with the CARES Act.
Okay, moving on. Uh, 7B COVID-19 local regulations update, Doug?
Yeah, the, the short version of this is college township uh made some, we need to update our, our, our current COVID. Uh, if you had a chance to look at the college township, changes they made, that would be on the um second page, primarily the second page of uh attachment 7B2. Um, they have deferred to the state's regulations in most cases. With the exception of outdoor gatherings and private homes and outdoor gatherings at parks where they have set a maximum of 100. Uh, with that, that's my recommendation and uh I'll ask the board to provide direction so I can uh prepare, prepare a change that we can uh take action on at the next meeting.
And comments from the board? Questions, comments? It sounds like uh nobody's objecting to your suggestion, Doug, so you may proceed.
Thank you.
Uh, 7B temporary signs proposed schedule to resume enforcement.
Yeah, again, we talked about this about a year ago. Um, I think we're getting close to the end of most of the COVID restrictions. Uh, restaurants, I, I believe are up to 75% capacity with the last latest changes from the governor. So um probably time to start rolling back the temporary signs. The first step would be uh notify everybody to remove uh, I call them off-premise temporary signs. Those are primarily the ones in the right of way. Um, and again, these are commercial signage, uh not political signage. Um, but know to start notifying people to get those off by the end of May and then go through a set of notices out to people who have on temporary signs on their own premises, uh telling them that they need to be back in compliance by July 2nd. And ask the board if they've got any uh input on that proposed schedule.
Uh, Betsy, go ahead.
Uh, great, thanks. What are other townships doing? I just, it would be nice if there was some uh cord, not coordination, but uh cotton, uh whatever, similiary. Thank you.
Uh, Ferguson Township never changed their temporary reg- sign regs. So um they, as a matter of fact, do not re- do not permit any signs whatsoever in their right of way, in the right of ways. Um, First Amendment or otherwise. So I don't know. I can check and see what other folks have done. Uh, I haven't really uh paid a lot. I don't get out of Patton Township that often, so I couldn't tell you what other people are doing.
It, it, yeah, not a deal breaker, just more curiosity. It would be helpful if there's some synchronicity. Sorry, yeah.
Any other comments or questions from the board? Uh, Doug, uh, no one's objecting to your schedules of notices here, so you may proceed.
Thank you.
Next item is 8, consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda that a member of the board would like to pull for separate discussion? Uh, Elliot, go ahead. You need to uh unmute yourself, Elliot. I didn't, I didn't know what you said. Couldn't read your lips.
I mumbled that I move approval.
Okay, is there a second?
Second, Pam, Rob.
Pam, Rob seconded. Any discussion on the motion to approve the consent agenda? Seeing none, uh, let's vote. All in favor, say aye and raise your hand. Everybody uh voted yes, so uh motion passes. Uh, managers report.
I have a long list of things to touch on. Be fitting a long agenda. Uh, I had correspondence. Uh, development update was included. We had some correspondence from Center County Central Booking. I included that in case anybody was interested in that. Uh, the short story is they think they have enough money to move forward, but you know, we are ultimately on the hook for their co- for their costs. Most of their costs are covered by fees that are charged uh for people that uh unfortunately have to go through central booking. Uh, First Energy has announced several uh assistance programs for folks. We had a uh thank you letter from Center Bike noting that um Center Region has become a bicycle-friendly community and they want to thank Patton Township for their support in all the things they do. Uh, there are several pages of PSAT's annual report that wasn't listed on the agenda, but was included in the attachment. Uh, we had a couple other attachments that came out yesterday. Uh, West Penn Power will be starting their annual tree trimming program uh throughout the county. So if you have uh power lines on your property, note that uh Uh, throughout the county, so if you have uh power lines on your property, note that uh. West Penn's contractors may be getting in touch. And uh doing work on your property in the West Penn Power right of ways. Uh, that's very important to keeping uh the service up and available. Especially when we have windstorms and ice storms and as we are. Likely to in central Pennsylvania, um probably last item. Was a report from PSU that the majority of their fall semester classes will be in person. Probably heard that from several folks today or in the last couple of days. Project updates, just a real quick on the Valley Vista shared use path. Uh, we are expecting contractor to be in there in the next few weeks. Uh, they've got to redo some of the the uh landscaping. Uh, check and make sure, you know, reseed where need be, a few washouts that need to be fixed. A few things like that, probably the major thing you'll see is uh. Uh, crosswalk markings on Valley Vista will be installed at Devonshire, Oakley and at Ambelwood. There may be some more signage that needs to be put up also. Uh, Abington Equine Hospital, we did open bids last week. Uh, we're gonna wait a little bit before we award that contract. Dr. Radke is looking at closing on the property at the end of this month, so. Things are work are moving forward, bids were, I think, higher than everyone. Uh, wanted them to be, but you know, they are what they are. Uh, I don't think I have, oh, uh Burnell and Fox Hill, they are out there currently working. Uh, one lane of traffic on Fox Hill Road currently, there's flaggers in place. Probably in two or three weeks, they'll go back to working on Burnell Road. At that point, they'll close Burnell Road for uh three weeks is the anticipated closure. Uh, to finish the work they need to do there uh on Burnell and in the intersection. Uh, they say it'll take them till midsummer to be done, but I I know they're trying to get it done as fast as possible. Probably longer than the two weeks I think it should take, but um HRI is back out there working. Uh, House Bill 255, we had information that was provided to us by. Center County Refuse and Recycling asking for support uh to uh. Support against House Bill 255, which would transfer many special use revenues. That the town, uh that the state currently uh keeps in secret, separate buckets and transfer all that to special accounts under the um. Under the general fund, there is um also provided comments from. Our the government liaison at PML and then some additional information from Shelley. At Center Region Council of Governments, the thought is that uh. There is more likely that those funds would be usurped for other purposes than uh. Protected for the specific purposes for which they've been collected. Uh, there is a request in there to uh consider. Can't remember exactly. I think they would like, probably like us to pass a resolution or something along those lines, I haven't prepared anything at this point. Uh, also included the uh housing starts graph for first quarter. After one, two, three, four, five, six quarters of increasing uh upward trend, we finally had a little dip. But I think you're gonna see uh. A fairly strong market, although uh talking to builders, uh costs are way up from what they were last year. Especially lumber costs have more than doubled in the last year. And they're saying steel products are hard to come by, so um. But the market, at least in State College, continues to be very robust. Um, I'm always, you know, almost every for sale sign you see around the township has a sale pending. Uh, attached to it, so um from what I hear from the realtors that. You know, people are getting multiple offers on everything that comes for, comes up for sale. Spring newsletter went out uh last week, you should have gotten copy at home, if not, there's a copy in there. And uh just a couple of things, Township Office will be closed on May 31. Got that ahead of everything else, the household hazardous waste, I've heard some public service announcements la- lately. Uh, household hazardous waste is at the end of April, you do need to pre-register. And May 18 is municipal primary day, end of my report.
Thank you, any comments? Yeah, go ahead.
Sorry, uh, I just wanted to give the board a update, I finally got to spend a little time on the volunteer recognition event. That we have scheduled for next Wednesday at 5:00 PM. Uh, we have 20 some people registered for the event already. Um, so which is really good, we've had really good uh response from everybody, all the ABC members about uh. Uh, what token of appreciation they would prefer. So I am working on the program for that and I will get information out to the board members tomorrow on that. So, thank you, that's now the end of my report.
Thank you, Doug, any comments or questions from the board? Uh, thank you, uh moving on, number 10 committee reports, so. Uh, reports have been submitted in writing, does anyone have any? Any uh committee they're on, they they wish to elaborate on their written report or? Does anyone have any questions for any of us on on our reports from our com- committees, yeah, Betsy, go ahead.
Uh, yes, so first I I don't, do not have any written reports, um and I apologize, and those are in the chute, want to get back to town. I do want to say that the Climate Action and Sustainability uh Committee, which met on April 12th. The other bit of information that they will, that that committee, we will need from y'all, from us. Is the percentage of our electricity that we intend to purchase from. The uh solar power purchase agreement, we're uh that's also being subsumed by the um somewhat by the. Climate Action and Sustainability Committee, so I know that in the past uh we agreed to 25%. I just wanted to uh at least, that's what I remember, uh double check with that, I think Larry might be keeper of the number there. And uh, yeah, so. I don't know that we need to have it by next month, but we'll need that number at some point. Anybody have any com- comments on that, that I need to take back? Okay, I just need that real time feedback.
Do you, Betsy, do you know how long that the term of that contract might be?
Good question, uh, I don't. Uh, um, what if Larry?
Doug, they're.
Twenty-five, thirty?
Yeah, they're talking any, you know, probably the the shortest of 15. And the longest of 30.
Okay, thank you.
Um, with with probably most people looking at about 20. 20 years.
Okay.
But we haven't gotten that far yet.
No, but we'll.
I mean, it's, okay, I mean, that gives me a sense of scale, though.
Right, but what, yeah, just so you know, um for when we hire the consultant. As consultant puts together this contract, the consultant will need to know the total amount of electricity that. Will probably be assuming from this, so that's obvious.
Okay, it looks like Larry and Doug have made notes, appropriate notes on that. Any other questions or comments on committee reports? All right, uh. Number 11, other business. Anita, did you want to bring something up at this time or you want to postpone? No, okay, well. When we have a shorter agenda, okay. Any other uh business from anybody?
I can't promise that next, the next meeting will be a lot shorter, but. There'll be a lot of ac- acumen.
That's okay, uh. We'll, we'll take it as it comes. Anything else for the good of the order? If not, uh, I'll accept a motion to adjourn. Uh, Elliot moved, so moves their second.
Second, Pam, Rob.
Um, it's moved and seconded. Uh, all in favor of adjourn, raise your hand, say aye.
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 Unanimous, thank you very much, folks.
Nice meeting, Dan.